Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, November 2nd, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll call the meeting into order. First agenda item this evening is just invocation and pledge of allegiance. I always invite a member of the audience forward to say a few words if they'd like to, if we don't have anyone signed up this evening, and we do not have anyone sign up to deliver the invocation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to do that? All right. If not, then we'll just move on to the pledge of allegiance this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give an invocation.
Thanks, sir.
Father, we ask you tonight to give us wisdom as we conduct the business of Currituck County. More importantly, Father, we ask you to lay your spirit on the hearts of everyone who goes to vote tomorrow, that they make a decision that's right for them. We keep in mind that this is an election for the soul of our country, a soul that is based on freedom, liberty, and justice for all people. Give us a discernment that we select the right candidates to lead our nation, our state, and our county forward. Father, be with us as we go home this evening. Keep everyone safe. And, Father, we ask you all these blessings in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a creed and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Are there any changes tonight?
Second.
Thank you. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. First up this evening is public comment. I have several people signed up. It looks like everybody pretty much, I think, signed up maybe for the sand mine, the Gallup proposed sand mine. I just want to let everybody know that is a special use permit for the Board of Commissioners, and we'll welcome you up tonight to say your piece. But when this comes before the Board of Commissioners, we have to sit as a quasi-judicial panel and only hear evidence put forward. So keep that in mind. This will be on our agenda. Ms. Leanne, when did you think that that would show up?
Um, most likely the second meeting in January.
Okay, so the second meeting in January, most likely they will come before us. And I was at a recent meeting with you guys, or several people that were down there, along with Commissioner Jarvis and Ms. Mary Etheridge. And we just want to let you guys know we're going to hear you tonight, but we can't really consider that when we go forward in time as evidence. So just keep that in mind. And at this time, I'd like to ask Sandy Green to come up, and I will remind you that you have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record when you come up this evening.
Excuse me, Sandy George, maybe?
George, oh, sorry. Yep. I should put my glasses on before I attempt this stuff, so my apologies.
And where should I?
Right up to the podium here. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Sandy George and live at 132 Pine Wood Acres Drive, 800 feet away from the proposed Gallup Mine, excuse me, on North Spot Road. I came here tonight because I don't believe industrial mining operations should be allowed in close proximity to residential living. The Unified Development Ordinance actually protects homeowners from industrial mining in residential communities. In reviewing the UDO, the first thing that struck me is its name, Unified Development. Unity goes together. These two sound more like a divorce. Further, when you read the UDO, you see the general purpose and intent of the UDO under Section A, foster convenient, compatible, and efficient relationships among land uses. Under G, preserve the character and quality of residential communities while providing increased housing options. And under H, promote desirable living conditions and the sustained stability of communities. At the community meeting, I asked Mr. Elliott if he ever placed an industrial mine so close to 40 private residential wells. His answer was no. At the community meeting, I asked Joanne Gallup if she would consider rescinding this application after hearing how upset her neighbors were. She said no. I believe the Gallup use mine, excuse me, Gallup mine use permit should be rejected by the Technical Review Committee. Anyone with a lick of sense knows industrial mining and residential living don't mix. That's why you have zoning map. Problem is, Mr. Elliott has to prove that they do. If this proposal comes before the Board, you'll have to decide if the residents of North Spot Road and Pine Wood Acres Drive are the crash test dummies for mixing industrial mine and residential living. Be O.C. willing to do that? Make this a permitted use in Currituck County? If any one Commissioner would vote yes to approve this, I would ask they take a copy of the UDO and a copy of the zoning map and throw it in the bottom of Ms. Gallup's sandpit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like I have a couple signed up. Michael and Janine Mixon?
Yes, this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Stacy Blake?
Hello, everybody. I'm Stacy Blake, and I live at 272, well, I don't live there yet, 272 North Spot Road. We've lived on the Outer Banks for over 30 years, and we, I got a horse a few years ago, and we had the desire, after being in Currituck for a little while, to move over here. So we purchased 272 North Spot Road three years ago because, one, of the country, the quietness of it, the Rule Center. I'm from the country. I liked the children and the quiet sound, and I like the unity of the neighborhood. So we started building, and we are projected to move in in a couple of weeks. But I do feel that had we known about this, we would not have bought the land. And now we're extremely concerned about the appraisal that's going to come in for our home. So we're very sad if this does happen to Currituck. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Dawson?
I'm also in the house.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up. Would anyone else like to speak this evening that has not signed up? Please come forward.
My name is Leslie Livingston, and I live at 107 Pine Wood Acres Lane. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing my comments tonight. As a homeowner in Pine Wood Acres, I would just like to express my extreme opposition to this project. Pine Wood Acres is a small, quiet, tight-knit little community. I mean, the neighborhood kids fish in my backyard and the canal, the turtles bask on the ponds, we walk dogs, and we ride bikes, and most of our noise comes from birds and frogs. There is a golf course nearby, as well as the beautiful and tranquil Currituck County Rural Center, which represents a considerable investment on part of the county. If this eight-plus, 35-acre, acre, 35-foot-deep pit is allowed to be dug, the noise, the dust, the disruption from large-scale pumps and the constant flow of dump trucks on a narrow Toon Lane residential road for years to come will be detrimental to our health and safety, as well as the quality of life in our community. In addition, shallow water wells are common in Pine Wood Acres. Round-the-clock pumping for this sand pit may cause aquifers to run dry, requiring deeper water drilling for new well points at considerable inconvenience and expense. According to the Unified Development Ordinance and planning manuals, the purpose of the UDO as it pertains to Currituck County residents is to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens and landowners of Currituck County. Approving this sand pit and potentially robbing us of clean water and the safe, healthy, and peaceful use of our property does not meet the stated purpose of the UDO, and in fact does the exact opposite. Lastly, it is an environmental shame to relegate the property marked for this project to a gaping hole in the ground. I hope you will choose to be responsible stewards of Currituck's dwindling undeveloped lands and allow a greener way to generate income for these property owners. As a tax-paying member of the community, I urge you to deny this proposal and preserve the integrity of the North Spot Road and Pine Wood Acres neighborhoods and the surrounding areas. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out. Mr. McCree, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Okay. With that, I will close public comment. As Commissioners, we are not allowed to discuss this because it's a special use permit. We have to hear evidence, so amongst ourselves, we can no longer discuss this. When we came, with three of us down to your public meeting, that was okay. Nothing been submitted yet. So as a Commissioner, can I talk to them about what it is that they can do for themselves as far as bringing in experts and things of that nature? Is that permitted?
I can just go ahead and say that at the quasi-judicial hearing, when the permit applicant comes forward, they will have the initial burden of proving their case. They will have to put on a substantial, material, and competent evidence, some through experts, to meet all the elements set out in the ordinance for the Board to be able to make a finding that a special use permit should be issued. Now, should they make that, meet their burden, that they submit sufficient evidence on each of those elements, and the burden shifts to those who are in opposition to the permit, and they would have to put on as well substantive, competent, and material evidence. Now, what's important is that they would have to also put on evidence of experts in order to contradict or overcome the evidence that has been introduced by the applicant through their experts. Specifically, our statutes say there are two issues that expert testimony is required. First of all, if a party claims that a project will or will not affect public safety, that evidence that the Board can consider on that issue may only come from an expert. Likewise, there's another provision in the ordinance that the proposed project will not negatively impact the value of adjacent property. And the statutes provide that testimony of whether a project will negatively impact the value of adjacent property can only be considered by the Board if that evidence and testimony comes from an expert.
Excuse me, and be harmonious with.
Well, with regard to the harmony, our courts have said that if an ordinance provides that a use is allowed within a zoning district, even with a use permit, it is deemed harmonious. And so it is very difficult to overcome the not in harmony or must be in harmony standard. But the important point is that if the persons that are opposed to this project, they probably should retain legal counsel and take that attorney's advice as to what type of case they would want to put together in order to present what evidence they have for this Board to consider that might be in opposition to that presented by the permit applicant.
Okay. So that was the lawyer speak. Does everyone know what the attorney just said? Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. I'm getting some head nods, though. Yes, sir.
One last question, Mr. McCree. If the opponents cannot overcome that evidence, the law says that permit must be granted?
That's correct. And we had an example not too many years ago, the Ecoplexus solar facility in Grandy on the old golf course. In that particular instance, the Board of Commissioners, having heard evidence from the permit applicant and the opposition, and the opposition put on what they purported to be expert witnesses to contradict the evidence of the applicant. In the face of that, the Board of Commissioners voted to deny the special use permit. Ecoplexus appealed that denial to the Court of Appeals, well, to the Superior Court, which upheld the Commissioner's denial, but it then went on to the North Carolina Court of Appeals. And the North Carolina Court of Appeals did the same analysis, basically what I just explained a moment ago, to determine that the evidence presented by the opposition was not competent material and substantive evidence, and the experts did not testify to the extent that the opposition's evidence could overcome the applicant's evidence. And therefore, the Board of Commissioners, because the applicant met their burden, the Board of Commissioners was required to issue that permit. So that's exactly right. If the applicant presents substantive, competent, material evidence and meets the burden, and the opposition does not rise to the occasion and is able to put on evidence to overcome that which is introduced by the permit applicant, then you are required to issue the permit. Now, you may place conditions reasonably related to the use of the property on the permit, but you're required to otherwise approve the permit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So it's kind of a weird position it puts us in, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood where you're at. Typically, these things come through, and we don't see a lot of opposition. Maybe one or two people will speak out against it. In this case, we have a whole neighborhood that's in opposition to this.
Two neighborhoods.
Two neighborhoods. Pardon me. Two neighborhoods. So, but I just want you guys to be informed and understand what we face as Commissioners, how we have to operate, and I related that at the meeting. But, you know, just again, to reaffirm that while we're here, to make sure that you guys get an expert, get an attorney to represent you, and talk about, you know, whatever path they want to go to to give us that competent evidence to make a decision one way or the other. And I thank you all for coming out this evening. We don't see many people for public comment, so.
The gentleman had his hand up in the back.
Yes, sir.
They said something.
Come on up to the mic. Come on up to the mic. Need your, who you are and all that good stuff.
They said something.
What's your name?
Mike Mixon.
Mike Mixon.
145 Pine Wood Acres.
Okay.
They said something about they were going to have to pump the water into the sound, like possibly have another permit for that. So, I mean, are we going to be told if that's going to go through, or?
That's, so nothing's happening right now. Okay? All that's happening is they're going to, they're getting their ducks in a row, and they're going to come in in January to present their evidence. And how they run the mine is regulated by the state, and that will be probably covered to some degree when they come in here, but really, they're just asking permission to dig a hole, is what it boils down to. The regulation on the back end of that is handled by someone outside of the county. There are some permitting procedures that have to take within the county, you know, distances that can be to the setbacks and all that kind of stuff. But that's not something we can really get into tonight. That is something that has to come forward at that meeting, and how they operate the mine is dictated by, you know, other state and federal agencies, really. So that's where your expert witnesses, you want to get together and really have people here to represent you, to speak for you on your behalf. Okay.
Because they said something like that could block the whole, stop the whole project. Like, they have to get that permit first before anything goes forward. So, I mean, that's.
Well, they have to get a use permit from us, is first and foremost, and that's what they're asking. Once they do that, they have other hoops they have to jump through to actually operate the mine physically.
Okay, because I'm a commercial fisherman, and, I mean, if you dump 10 or 20 years of fresh water in the sounds.
We can't, I got to stop you.
My opinion, I mean, it's devastating for Currituck.
Right. And that's the problem, that can't be an opinion. It has to be from an expert.
For 35 years.
But you're not an expert.
I feel like I'm an expert in commercial fishing.
Right. Unfortunately, you have to have the letters behind your name somewhere to say that.
I got somebody. I'm working on it.
Okay, great. That's what we need. That's the perfect route to go down.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming out this evening.
I have a question. You don't mind?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask the county manager a question real quick while she's coming up?
Yep.
I'm Deanna Dawson.
Go ahead. One second.
Lady first. She go ahead.
Okay, I'm Deanna Dawson. I live at 204 North Spot Road. I was told that currently on the docket, they are possibly trying to change the laws and that sand mining pits are trying to be pushed that they have to have direct access to 168 and not be going through small neighborhoods, and I'm wondering if that is true.
No, there was some discussion about that. Stephen Craddock had talked about changing how mines operate and had come forward but didn't really get anywhere with it. He never finished his application to change our ordinance regarding how sand mines operate. So at this time, that is not taking place. But that was something that was. He came up and presented to the Board and withdrew, he did a work session, I believe, right, with him, and then he, it was a work session.
I don't believe we ever held the public hearing, Chris. I think he withdrew the application before the public hearing ever occurred.
It never really got anywhere, but that was something that a private individual was looking at doing, to amend the ordinance for mines and how they operate. And so anybody can do that. You can come forward with a text amendment to change. It's a living document, so we can change our minuence of how things are regulated pretty much at any time with, you know, approval of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
So, but that wouldn't happen in a timely manner. That would not happen, and assuming this comes to us in January, the latter part of January, then that takes many months to do that. You have to write it, you have to go through a procedural process to get to us, so that takes several months.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
My question to the county manager, the, one of the ladies said something about the county, or the county water, Pine Wood Acres and North and South Spot Road, they're not on county water?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
They're well.
Most of them have wells.
42 residential wells.
Yep. Yep. All well, well. Okay. All right. So you guys have your marching orders. We'll hopefully see you in January. Next up on the agenda this evening is Board of Commissioner comments, and I feel like we've already kind of got through that partially. I'll start that off this evening. Don't have much to say tonight. I just want to wish everyone the best of luck with the election coming in tomorrow, specifically Bobby Hannig. He's our representative and a Currituck boy, so obviously, we want to see him keep his job. As our state representative, Senator Steinberg has served us well. I'd like to wish him all the best in his running tomorrow for a favorable outcome. And I heard on the radio driving, it was yesterday, that supposedly Trump's going to declare victory as soon as he has some kind of whatever, and it led to nowhere. But I'm going to go out on a limb and congratulate Ms. Kitty Etheridge on her victory as a Commissioner, Ms. Selena Jarvis, Paul Beaumont, who's not here tonight, and myself. We're running unopposed, so we got to, in the general election, so congratulations. You're stuck here for another four years, and you for your first four years.
Benioff in Vegas.
Right. Right. One of the things I've talked about with the county manager and haven't moved it to the Board yet, coming out of that community meeting over this sand mine was, what was brought up there was noticing. We have noticing in place now for, most stuff, it's innocuous. You know, we'd notice the people around the business that maybe is doing something like a car dealership is going to open up next to you, and it's not a big deal. We just want to let you know what's going on, and if you're in opposition to it, you can come out and talk about it or whatever. In this case, though, they brought up a flaw, or deficiency in how we notice. And so I've talked to him about that, and I'm telling the rest of the Board now, or the ones that are here now, that I'd like to consider talking about that at our annual retreat this year and looking at changing that ordinance, especially with something like a sand mine or these more intensive uses that you really wouldn't think about. So it's ag back there, for instance, in a mine, but it's an intensive use of agricultural land next to residential. So going forward, we would just possibly adopt a new policy for noticing further out for areas that would be impacted by these higher intensive uses than we currently do. So we'll work through that in the coming year and get that moving, get that moving along so that in the future, we don't have that happen again to people. That's all I have for this evening. Ms. Kitty?
Thank you for, congratulations. At our Social Service Advisory Meeting last month, the North Carolina Association of County Directors of Social Service announced that Samantha Hurd, the Director of Currituck County's Department of Social Services, has successfully completed the requirements of the Association Director Academy. The purpose of the academy is to provide essential and continuous professional development opportunities, and it's a benefit for being a Director of Social Service in North Carolina. The academy is self-guided and self-paced program designed to enhance learning for directors. The North Carolina Association of County Directors of Social Services is a nonprofit association representing the social service directors across North Carolina counties. The association mission is to inform, educate, and empower members to strengthen their agencies, programs, and to deliver social service for families and individuals. So I'd like to congratulate Ms. Hurd for her hard work and dedication to the county. Also, I'd like to thank William Nelson, the Director of the Airport Authority, who gave a really nice tour from the sky for us county commissioners last month. It was really exciting to go up and see his enthusiasm about the airport, and it's really growing and doing great things. And as Commissioner Etheridge said in his invocation, please remember the elections. The polls open tomorrow morning at 6:30 in the morning and close at 7:30 at night. You have to vote at your precinct now. You don't go down to the election board to vote. Vote at your precinct, and make sure you thank your precinct officials when you go in and vote. It's been a really challenge for most of them. They've done a fabulous job with one-stop voting, and the staff, we all need to give them a big thank you for all the hard work that they've done, and make sure you get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCord?
I'd like to recognize, she got her congratulations, and it's Commissioner Etheridge's birthday today, too, so she's dedicated to show up on her birthday for a meeting.
I wasn't going to do that to you, Kitty.
I did it to you, so I'm sorry. But happy birthday to her. I'd like to recognize a couple county employees, just a couple things. We had, I attended a retirement luncheon today for one of our sergeants at the beach, which I'm sure Commissioner White Caesar. Sergeant Teresa Thornton retired today. She was with the county for right at 15 years, I believe, super officer, dedicated. She didn't live in the county, she lived in Camden, but she attended so many events in this county, whether it was off-duty and on-duty, so she was literally a part of the community. But I wish her luck in her retirement. Like I said, we had a huge turnout for her lunch, but, you know, we won't say a no number, so in case Roy Cooper's watching. But, and then, and our public safety, Mike Lane, I know everybody saw, I saw him today in Elizabeth City right before the meeting at Walmart. He was going to referee a basketball game tonight, but he was real influential in another save at the beach, because everybody knows the beach is still busy, there's a lot of people at the beach. And him and Ocean Rescue, which, I mean, all summer, dispatch, all the public safety, fire any mess, the Sheriff's Department, anybody else, I mean, they're just, it's been busy this year, and everybody's done a good job, but I did want to shout out to him. Our superintendent's here, the schools, Thursday, 197 cars. The principal at Charbro had a clicker in her hand, 197 cars. I worked the road on 34 with the Sheriff's Department, trying to direct people through, and the schools are doing a good job because, you know, I'm glad to see the buses, I'm glad to see the elementary kids. The kids need that, you know, one-on-one, you know, or time with the teacher, and not the, virtual's kind of hard to cut, do some cutouts online, but, you know, if you're in kindergarten, but that's just my opinion. I'm glad to see them at the school, and they're doing a good job. Parents, if anybody's watching this at home, or anybody, parents in the crowd, you know, the rules that they send out, the one thing that does slow it up a little bit, and it's crazy, the, you know, they want the kids to be here on this side and follow the rules, so it expedites, we have had a couple horn beeps, and "Come on, man!", you know, but nobody's gotten a fisticuff, thank goodness, and it's amazing what a 25-cent sticker will do for a four-year-old going to pre-K who was like trying to fight the world. I put that little sticker on that girl, and she got out of the car and thought she was a superhero, so. But the schools have been doing a great job. I'm glad they're back. And then next week, we're going to have the, well, yeah, next week, we go to the middle school, correct, next Monday. So that means school zones, don't speed in school zones, because you might see this guy in another capacity. This weekend, the Bulls and barbecue, and our audience is stomping grounds. The Rule Center has that this weekend. That's a great event. I know they had a event, a horse show there that last weekend, too. So that road is going to be very busy this weekend.
No, it's not.
What?
It's closed.
Oh, it's closed?
Yeah, we're not doing it.
We are, we're doing the barbecue competition.
Barbecue.
Not the rodeo, but it's no spectators.
Oh, I thought they were still, I thought, read the email. Okay, well, scratch that. And I didn't even talk about that. But like I said, one more thing.
They're shaking all their hopes up, Kevin.
Yeah, sorry about that. That'll be in 2021. I was talking about that for next year, I'm sorry. Voting tomorrow, go out and vote, do your civic duty, and when you wake up Wednesday morning, you're still gonna have a job, no matter who wins or who loses or whatever. Like you said, it's, you know, everything's still gonna function the same the next day. So like I said, get out and vote, 6:30 to 7:30, as Ms. Kitty said. Don't go to early voting, because you're not gonna vote there, because it's not early voting. But go to your precincts, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Romo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As already, as already been mentioned, voting is very important tomorrow. Just give you a little bit of an update on, we're early voting and absentees that have come in to date. There's roughly 22,000 registered voters in Currituck County. A little over 10,000 people voted early voting or absentees have been submitted so far compared to 2016, when only 5,463 early votes and absentee votes were counted before the election day. That's almost a tremendous turnout for any general election. I'd like to see us hit 70% turnout with people will go out and vote tomorrow. So as I said in my invocation, this is a election for the soul of this country, and it just depends on, you know, how you define our soul. Is it based on liberty? Is it based on justice? The greatest country in the history of the world? And we need to participate, regardless of how you vote, we need to participate to maintain this greatest country the world has ever seen. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Jarvis?
Well, a lot of people have said this, but we've had a lot of really close presidential elections throughout our history. 1800, 1824, 1876, 2000, and 2016 were all very close elections. And in all of those close elections, when it was over, some people rejoiced and some people cried and wailed. I don't think this is gonna be any different. I think this is going to be one of those very close elections. And I urge everybody, no matter the outcome, to remember that although we have differences of opinions, we all share the values of America and what makes this country what it is. In 1800, one of the most contested elections ever, Thomas Jefferson was chosen president by the House of Representatives, and it took 36 tries to come to that decision. It was a very contentious election. He knew the country was divided, and he sought to unite the country at that time. And this is what he said in his, part of what he said in his first inaugural address. "But every difference of opinion is not a difference of principle. We have called by different names the brethren of same principles. We are all Republicans. We are all Federalists." You could add Democrats today. "Let us then, with courage and confidence, pursue our own federal and Republican principles, our attachment to the Union and representative government." I urge you to take his advice. I urge you to get out, if you haven't cast your vote, to get out and do so tomorrow, 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. And when the winner is determined, let us unite by what we agree on and not dissolve into chaos about our differing opinions and who should have been the winner. And I'd also like to say happy birthday to Commissioner Etheridge, and congratulations to Samantha Hurd.
Can we get a round of, maybe singing for you tonight? Would you like?
Hey, and one, one additional thing. The signs stealing, the sign damaging. If you want to steal signs, feel free to start stealing them tomorrow at 7:31, anywhere in Currituck County. We have no objection.
Right.
Because, man, we had so many calls on that stuff, and like I said, so, and feel free, 7:31 tomorrow.
Believe me, as someone that put out over 400 signs and they're all gone, please take up the ones you want. I don't want to have to go back and get them. And I don't want to see them show up on Thursday back on the roadside.
Owen, I want to tap into your vast knowledge of elections. Do you remember or know how many people actually voted in the last election here in Currituck in 2016?
In 2016?
2016, it was probably about 10,000.
Right, so we've already hit that. Well, it was an internal election.
We've equalled what happened in 2016.
Yep.
It was 60-something, I think. It was high 60.
About 60% for 18,000 people.
Yeah.
And Owen did vote for Thomas Jefferson in the 1800s, too.
All right.
Taught him everything he knew.
So we're gonna have a busy day tomorrow. All right, well, that's the end of Commissioner Comment. I will toss it over to the county manager now for his report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I just wanted to go over was highlight some things that the Forest Service has done. Normally, they come and do kind of an annual report, but with COVID, they've just kind of mailed out or emailed out the report, so I just wanted to hit some of the high spots. While there were some forest fires in our community that burned approximately 40 acres, they responded well and actually saved a lot of private property. In particular, there was a fire in the four-wheel-drive area that the Carova Volunteer Fire Department, as well as the Forest Service, really did a good job fighting. In the fire, Forest Management Section, they wrote 21 plans for roughly 900 acres of forest land for folks who want to make sure that their land stays in quality timber and protect water quality and soils in that area. They also were able to acquire a grant for $10,000 for the mitigation of roughly a 350-acre marsh burning around Currituck Club. They also did 25 education events in the community, and they provided expert assistance to seven individuals in Currituck County around urban tree, insect, and disease concerns. There's a two-page letter that lays out all of their accomplishments for the year. You all will have a copy of that at your disposal if you want to take a look at it. Commissioner McCord hit on the, what is typically called Bulls and Barbecue, which is a rodeo and barbecue competition. We will be having the barbecue competition. It'll be November 7th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. It will be, it will be available for live streaming, so if you want to kind of check that out, see what's going on, there'll be some music that you can watch, kind of like we did with, with folks who couldn't attend the Fourth of July celebration. In this case, we wanted to make sure we continue the event, because we have quality competitors. We want to make sure they can come back once COVID's lifted, so we have to have the event to keep them engaged in Currituck County and recognize that we are a place dedicated to that kind of activity. However, it would have been extremely difficult to meet the governor's executive orders as it applies to outdoor events, so we decided to just do it as a streaming-only event. The last thing I wanted to touch on was something that I mentioned earlier to the board during the work session, just briefly. The governor signed an executive order back in the spring that deferred water bill payments. It didn't mean that you didn't have to pay your bill eventually, it just meant you didn't have to pay it then. And in Currituck County, we had quite a few people who took advantage of that. However, their bill continued to grow, so there are some balances on accounts that are now due. That executive order has expired. We are required under law to, you know, try to collect those funds. We cannot just forgive water bills. That is not allowed under general statute. It's actually legal for you all, the commissioners, to just, you know, say that water bills don't have to be paid. So we were trying to figure out the best way to do that. There was a payment plan option that was available to folks. It's still available to folks. If you're out there and you have a balance on your water bill, you can get up to a six-month payment plan through the Water Department. I'd encourage you to do that. What we're going to do is, folks who are coming due for cutoff, we will put door hangers on their residence over the next, a week before their cutoff date. So that will give them roughly a week's notice that they need to call for a payment plan. I encourage all individuals who have a balance on their water bill. We do not want to have to come and cut water off. We don't enjoy it. It's very stressful for the folks who have to go through that cutoff. I know that. So I encourage folks to please call, if you, even if you're not sure if you have a balance, if you just think you do, call the Water Department and get on a payment plan. It's the best way to get current on your water bill. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is administrative reports, item A, submission of the 2021 reappraisal schedule values. Mr. Tracy Sample, our tax administrator, is here this evening. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Pretty good. Nice to see y'all. Happy birthdays. My son's birthday, Alex, as well. Happy birthday, too. It's 2021, so here are our next countywide reevaluation. It's been eight years since the last one. Tonight, I have with me Mr. Roger Kelly. He's a project manager for, what's the name of your company? Tyler Technology. He's retired assessor from New Hanover County. He's also worked on appraisals in Pender County down in Topsail, and also Franklin County. Well, tonight, in your packets, you should have gotten a copy of his schedule of values, standards, and rules. I have to submit those to y'all, and then about two weeks, we'll have a public hearing on these, and then the following meeting will ask for adoption. That's all of that I have tonight, just to submit these to y'all.
Okay.
If you didn't get a copy, make sure I'll send you a copy. There'll be a copy in my office for the public to come take a look at, and we'll probably try to get on our website, so people can just go to the website and look at it.
All right. I tried to make it through that last night. It was some good reading material to sign on, ease on into some sleep, but you guys look for this stuff, so. Any questions for Mr. Sample this evening?
Did it come in pretty much as you thought it might?
Uh, I don't know how you think I thought it might. We saw some, some growth in some areas, and then we saw some pockets that, some pockets went up a little, some pockets may have gone down. Not a big, big change. Like our last revaluation, we changed 32% negatively, and in Pat, some revaluations, we've had them double, but we're not looking at that, you know, a few percentage points one way or the other. Like I said, the north ends is probably seeing the biggest increase in property values. All the beaches in north end, the beaches before we drive, most of that's probably going down a little bit. Rest of the beaches, pockets, some up, some down, some about the same. Rest of the counties, pretty much likewise, you'll see some pockets may have gone up a little bit, and some may have gone down or adjusted, but nothing major, one way or the other.
No big surprises.
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our economic development report from Larry Lombardi, our economic development director. Good evening, sir.
Good to see you all again.
How are you?
Again, I wish happy birthday to you, Ms. Kitty. Yeah, we can go on to the next slide. Thanks. Tonight, just wanted to let you know, I highlight it in big letters, big idea, so I want you all to think of the word "big" today. So when I finish, that should be the takeaway at the end of the presentation. I have about eight or nine slides here, and I'll go through some of them. What I do want to let you know is that the actual annual report, I'll probably have it finished or printed up in about another week. It's much more detailed than what I'm gonna speak about tonight. So once that gets printed, I'll put it into your various boxes, so you'll have that, okay? Also, it'll be online at ThinkCurrituck.com, and it'll be available for people to download if they like to take a look at it. All right. The first one is just talking about residential development, and obviously, we heard from Tracy from the tax department, and of course, things that have been going on, people know that. And I'm talking from July 1st of last year to June 30th of this year, doing a fiscal report, annual report. So in terms of applications that have come through, we're talking well over 600. When you look at it from an estimated investment, you know, it's 100, almost $175 million, which is showing tremendous growth here in the county and will continue to show tremendous growth. The second slide, again, in commercial development, is we need to have that balance between residential and commercial. We have quite a bit of activity going on, not just in one area, not necessarily in Moyac through the middle of the county, the southern end of the county, and there is some work going on in Corolla as well. But from an engagement standpoint, there's quite a bit of interest from commercial developers in Currituck County. And you can see just roughly the numbers for assessed value and potential capital investment The next slide is in terms of businesses, new businesses. Now, I only listed a few here. Fusion Offices in Barco, across from the high school, that just opened up. Royal Realty, which is here in Moyac, and Beach House Flooring was down in Jarvisburg. But there's also others, like BK, Pit Stop down in Harbinger to open up. Up in Moyac, we have Nova Herring Center that just opened up, they're a license plate agency. This gentleman is a, the owner is a Currituck County resident, has a location in Virginia Beach and expanded into Moyac this past year. Also, going up past the highway, the other day on Saturday, Scoops Ice Cream. There must have been six or seven cars parked in front getting ice cream. So that was kind of neat to see that. And then down at the further end, Dirty Habit Off-Road in the former Wells Building. That's been a couple that have been in business for 10 years and have purchased that. And so that's really good to see, that building being used and the number of people that they're hiring for that particular job. Thank you. Okay, when I talk about expansions and coming soon, it's not just businesses that are expanding, it's also job creation, jobs that are being created. For example, Built to Last, and I know Bob and Owen have met the owner, the new owner, and with, they had about 12 employees when they had taken over. They're now up to 25.
Wow.
So they really have expanded, not only domestically, but internationally. And hopefully, at some point, they'll be looking to expand their footprint. But from a job perspective, they've done a tremendous job. Same thing with, now Baker's Peanuts is going into the former 7-Eleven at Grandi, right there at that, and again, they're expanding, wanted to have a footprint here in, in Currituck County, because they knew it would be a good site, so, and they're really doing a good job. And of course, we know about the Wendy's and Hardee's redoing, knocking that whole place down. It's hard to believe that it was back in January, because with the COVID, things seemed like they were three years ago, but it really wasn't that far ago, that long ago for that to be happening. And of course, I know everybody's been asking about Buffalo City. I spoke with the owner just last week. Of course, with COVID and all this other stuff, things have, had slowed down, but he has a closing date this month with the bank, and once that's done, it'll start construction of his facility down there, which I know everybody's looking forward to that. So it'll be the first in Currituck County, legal one. The one thing I do want to point out about that, you know, there's, all these positions, all these buildings are really, or companies are adding jobs. We're between five to 25 jobs for these different businesses, and it doesn't seem like a lot, you know, we're not, we're, you know, 400 jobs are coming here, but this is what we do, and this is what our economy's all about. And that's what makes it, I think I said from the very beginning, the small business is what makes this country grow, and we're really a good example of that. And of course, there's two others that I'll mention about expansion. I know after I sit down, you have a text amendment in front of you from Tractor Supply. Assuming that you all approve that, that's going to be a tremendous addition up in Moyac. And those type of companies have been looking, this goes back a couple years. They look and plan to see where the areas are across the country, and, you know, we were on their radar. So assuming that everything moves forward, they'll probably be open by midsummer next year, and we'll be hiring a number of people.
I was in one today. I'm tired of giving my money to another county.
Exactly, exactly. It'll be a perfect fit for our county as well.
Absolutely.
And the other is just to revamp, it's a redo, is Brinley Beach. I spoke with Doug, just dropped off a new contract the other day for lot number one in the Maple Commerce Park. Early on, they were going to move forward somewhere else, and COVID hit, and nobody knew who was gonna be in business, so to speak. So anyway, they're moving forward, and so we're looking forward, probably sometime next year when the next year when we start breaking ground. So, overall, throughout the county, there's really been a great deal of economic development. And you'll see in the booklet that'll be printing up. But there are a number of companies that I didn't even mention tonight, or even in the book, but there's quite a bit. So let me go on to the next slide. And got to talk about the website, ThinkKurTuck.com. And I know for some, they've kind of their eyes glass over. But when you look at where we are ranked, and thank you, Selena, for sharing, resharing, reposting.
Love the Halloween costume one.
Oh, yeah. The Frankenstein mobster was the one that came in number one. Yeah. So, so all the support of commission, if you always reshare the post, that always helps. But anyway, the reason why we're ranked number one, a lot of it has to do with against our competition. My competition, from a county perspective, I have all the other counties in, in the state, the Northeast, North Carolina, plus Hampton Roads. So, and the reason why it's ranked from an organic search, which basically means people are actually going to Google and putting in the information, putting out information that people, content people are searching for. So I mean, you just look at the 400-plus original articles and blog posts, it's capturing people's attention. So if you had to put a, if you had to monetize it, we're talking thousands of dollars. So this is not paid ads. These are not AdWords, and Bob understands, being in that kind of, this is organic. So that's important. So anyway, just, just wanted to let you know that, I thought that'd be important. Ben, if we could go on? Thank you. Ah, he's already jumping ahead. Thank you so much. Again, this is just to reiterate, because of COVID, it really did cancel a number of networking events that I would go to, or outreach to, to various people. But just note that the Economic Development Department was open every single day, no matter what was the situation. I was doing virtual meetings, Zoom, Teams, WebEx, whatever the term, the technology was out there, I was doing it, constantly engaged with, with the stakeholders. And certainly with the email newsletters that go out, and thank you again for reading it. We do have, the open rate is, it's, it's amazing, so very blessed for that. And there's a couple of things I want to point out on this slide about the Ask Larry video series. You know, we know the Call Larry, right? Well, the Ask Larry is a new series, and a lot of times I get questions from people looking to come into the county, or questions about business practices, or things like that, or business license. So I've compiled a number of these questions, and basically have put a video together. You could go to ThinkKurTuck.com under the blog, and it's about a minute, minute and a half. I've already done four, and I'll be doing more. But it's just a way to engage people that have asked these questions, and for them to get to hear, or they can certainly call, not call, but email me, they can call me, if they have a question. And if it's worth it, we'll put it on video and get to see my face on it. But the other thing I want to point out, particularly during the COVID, to keep activity going, that we've created a commercial real estate newsletter. I can tell you, there's nobody in any economic development department in this country, definitely not in this region, that are doing this. And it's a, it's a way to be engaged with the commercial real estate brokers. And the lady that's here at the bottom to the left, Deborah Stern, she's probably, has been the number one commercial real estate broker for years up in the Hampton Roads area. So we'll highlight a particular commercial real estate broker every, every month. We just started a couple of months ago. And so the next one will be coming out, actually, probably next week. And it'd be, that'll be interesting to read, to know who it is and what he's done, particularly if you all like the movie Sandlot. Just to give you a little hint on that. But...
It's the film is small.
Yeah, exactly. So just want to let you know that actually, Kurutuck County, from economic development perspective, is out there not only on a local or regional level, but it's on a national, international level. And we're going to continue to market the county as a place to do business. All right. And the seventh one, remember about the word big? Well, I'm going to apply it to this one. Now, first, let me touch on the zoning. I'm not a, I'm not a planner by any stretch imagination, but I did sleep at the Holiday Inn for one night.
No, I'm Kurutuck.
Yeah. But no, Laurie and her department, they're great. So what I'm talking about is from a economic development perspective. And I'm talking about, not today, two, three years, five years, 10 years down the line with this county, the potential for the growth of the opportunities from a commercial standpoint. That's how we want to grow our base. The whole purpose behind Kurutuck Station was to create a job center, so that people don't, don't end up going across the state line spending their money. We want them to spend it here in Kurutuck County. And so that's very important, that we have the opportunity, areas, and I'm not just saying on a quarter, certainly land behind the corridor, all the way down to the Wright Memorial Bridge. We have such a golden opportunity to develop those areas. So just think about that. I mean, just for example, Friday, I'm going to be on a webinar with the Department of Commerce regarding offshore wind economic development opportunities. We have two that, one that's off the coast of Virginia, Virginia Beach, which is Dominion Power. They have two test turbines that are running right now, which will run for the next couple of years. Beyond that, if things work out in terms of what they want to do, and again, when I say offshore wind or this type of thing, it's, it's another tool in the toolbox when you talk about energy. We still need the fossil fuels, we still need the plants to run and all that stuff. But it's an opportunity for our county, because we're so close to the port of Virginia. And typically, where these type of offshore wind farms are developed, you have a supply chain that is developed around that, just because of transportation costs, and of course, these components, there's probably well over 6,000 components that, that are into one of these wind turbines. So if you look at the West End, a hotel in Virginia Beach from the ground up, that's, that's how tall one of these turbines are, above the water. It's the same distance below the water, too. So, but we have a great opportunity. It's an industry that's nascent here in this country. And when you talk about welders, pipe fitters, electricians, you know, our school that we have at COA, those type of trades are there and really could be expanded. So we have a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to continue to grow the tax base and continue to raise the standard of living of our residents, because these are going to be good paying jobs. And then we have, which is much further down, is the Kitty Hawk offshore wind farm by Avogard. They're the same people that, that did the Amazon wind farm, but now offshore. That's further down. But from a, just an economic development perspective, those two farms are really a large enough to draw a supply chain, which is all in Europe today, to come to this part of the world, in our county, to bring in these jobs, and high paying jobs. So again, thinking big, thinking three, five years, 10 years down the road for commercial development, I'll see things happening. Now, broadband, I think we all know, we've gotten calls from people, particularly with the COVID, people ended up being home, working remotely, and unfortunately, there's some areas in the county that we do not have the service, and it's for different reasons. Basically, the incumbents aren't going to spend the money to go down the end of the road, and there's no incentive for them to do it. Hopefully, something that, that will be addressed. Even though we've looked at, and Ben had had me look at, if there's opportunities to look at the program that the state offers for broadband. Unfortunately, well, number one, because we're Tier 3, even though they've kind of changed the rule to allow Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3, but when you're only talking $10 million, and let me explain, you know, I've worked more than 40 years in the private sector, most of it was in high tech. $10 million is kind of like 25 cents in somebody's pocket. When you're talking 100 counties, not even counting the cities. Nice gesture, but it's, you know, sounds good, but in reality, it doesn't go very far. Okay? So that's something. And then the last one, and we kind of touched on it, I know you all touched on it, in the work session, is infrastructure. Commercial development's not going to come unless there's services, and particularly in our case, with the county offers water and sewer. And sewer, as we know, is something that, that we need. Businesses aren't going to create, you're not going to find a shopping center with an anchor on septic. That land that they're buying, they want to get every dollar that they can out of that acreage. So if you're setting aside, you talk about a 50-acre shopping center, let's just say up in Moyac, because that seems to be the more logical location, they're not going to, they're not going to come there if there isn't sewer. But again, you got to think three, five, 10 years out, and the way that we're going to grow the tax base and not impact the infrastructure, like the schools and other things, is the commercial development. And we have, right now, we're in a position to control that. Again, I'm just saying this as in, because you are my advisory board, besides elected officials. These are things that I think needs to be taken into consideration long-term, of what really is going to happen in this county. Because it's coming south. The opportunities are going to come south, and not just to the northern, it's going to move throughout the entire county. And I think how we do it, whatever you all decide, is going to have an impact long-term. And we have the opportunity to grab it and really grow and do something wonderful. But anyway, that's my last slide. And as you all know, you can call Larry, or you can even ask Larry.
I have a question.
Anyway, if you, if you have any questions, I certainly...
Well, he'd like to ask, Mr. Etheridge would like to ask one.
Okay, yes, sir.
You mentioned the offshore wind farms. I read where the governors of Maryland, Virginia, and North Carolina signed what I think is a memorandum of understanding to promote that. Do you have any updated information on that?
No, I think it was just to, you know, it's really a motion to the offshore industry to show that region, because these three areas close, that's the best part, to have a supply chain in this country, particularly on the East Coast, because where it would benefit would be the northeastern states, because their electricity rates are, you know, very high anyway. So I think it was just, again, a, from a political standpoint, to show that all three states are together, that they want to see this happen here. But really, what's, it has to be a national policy. And the only reason why I say that, previous to being here, been economic developed for a dozen years. When I worked for the city of Norfolk, we were one of the original Virginia offshore wind charter members, and I was a representative for the city, which was more than a dozen years ago. And the biggest thing I heard from the developers coming from overseas is, we need to see, and this is nothing new, that the policies are going to, that you put in place will stay in place, aren't going to change after two years or three years. Because no business wants to make an investment and then know three years later, the rules have changed. So I get it, I understand it, but until, until there's a clear path from a national level, and a commitment for that, and again, this is not going to solve the energy issues. It's because the sun doesn't shine 24/7, nor does the wind blow 24/7. It's not there for utility use. And I'm not speaking out of school, I've been involved with it for quite a long time. But it is an opportunity to be another tool in the toolbox that will help us from an energy independence perspective, no doubt about it. But yes, a long answer, yes, I was aware of it, and, and I understand where it was coming from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And your efforts. All right. Next up is a public hearing, item A, PB 20-15, Tractor Supply Company text amendment. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Yeast and Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement, to allow large outdoor displays in storage areas and display areas that are not directly adjacent to the principal structure for agricultural support and service uses. Good evening, Mr. Cicero. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The item before you tonight is a text amendment sponsored by Tractor Supply. I'd give you a little bit of background on this. We were contacted by Tractor Supply several months ago about locating here in Kurutuck. As our conversations continued, we realized that our UDO did not, limited the flexibility for outdoor display and for sales items, specifically, why not? I can use this one. They wanted these, these large outdoor display areas beside them? Is this not?
It's a little strange, you got to keep going to the right end.
Okay.
Hold on.
Well, you can probably just, the large areas on the side of the building, along with the areas here in the front. And they also, our UDO did not address, this is what we called the detached storage here in the way in the front with the trailers. Yeah, there you go, where these little trailers are. Our current language does limit areas of outdoor display to be proportional with the storefront and the building, where the use is. And this was the intention, this was done to address the cluttering effect of stores and areas along, along NC 12 in Corolla and along Keratok Highway. There was just a little bit too much outdoor display, and it wasn't handled, it wasn't done very well.
Hey, you can use the...
Okay, thank you. So after several conversations with Tractor Supply, we suggested that they sponsor a text, text amendment to, to clarify these and to get this to where they needed it to be. Worked with staff, and we got the language down to where it addresses their needs, but also some of, addresses some of staff's concerns about the aesthetics and about the cluttering effect that this could, that this could cause having, allowing more outdoor display areas. So this is their site plan for their area in Moyac. The areas in yellow, right here, that is going to be the areas of their outdoor display. The areas in green is going to be the sidewalk display that you guys saw in the earlier pictures. And then there, they do have an area of detached display that's going to be between their parking lot and Keratok Highway. So, you know, because the, what Tractor Supply sells, they just need more room, they need more outdoor display than what we had. So they had these three areas. So we, they are suggesting this text amendment that there's going to be several parts of this text amendment, but the first one is to, to change the definitions, or not to change, to add this language to the definition for agricultural retail facility, because we don't really have a definition, we don't have a use that addresses exactly what they do. So an agricultural retail facility, we're adding this definition, a facility where the principal use is retail sales of products related to agriculture. And next, we are going to be adding in the use table, an agricultural retail facilities is going to be added to the agricultural use classification in the use table, agricultural support service, not directly related. It's going to be added to, to be allowed in ag, general business, limited business, community center, LA and HI with a zoning permit. So these type things like Tractor Supply are going to be allowed in these use districts, I mean, in these zoning districts. So those are the two of the things so far that this text amendment is going to address. And then it's also going to get into use specific standards. So the, for in, under agricultural uses, the agricultural retail facilities, and, and these are going to be very specific items of what they are allowed to do in their outdoor display and sales. They're going to have fencing materials, pet and livestock equipment and feed, piping, trailers, tool rental, pedal boats, all-terrain vehicle, utility vehicles, lawn and garden equipment. equipment, lawn and garden materials, bagged. And something that I did not get into the, into the presentation, is that they are going to be allowed to have that non-adjacent display area that's between the front of the store and the, and the road. And that is, that language is on packet page 112 in your packet, but the all-outdoor, all, this language is going to be added as well to, this is going to be under B on this one, after A is going to be under B. All outdoor display of goods shall be located immediately adjacent to the storefront or the building side, with the exception of the non-building adjacent or detached outdoor display up to 70% of the building square footage, allowed between the building and the street front. Non-building adjacent or detached outdoor display areas shall be screened with a type A buffer yard or a type B buffer yard, option one or two. Outdoor display areas associated with agricultural support services shall not be limited by length and shall be limited to a size of 125% of the overall building square footage. And outdoor display areas adjacent to the building, excluding the sidewalk display areas, will be contained by a fence for aesthetics and security reasons. The fence will be either wrought iron, powder-coated aluminum, or similar material with decorative columns. So in addition to that, this language here, the language I just read is going to be in there. So because we view outdoor display areas as accessory use standards, we're adding this additional language to Section 4.4 for accessory uses for outdoor displays. So the display areas not adjacent to the principal building are only allowed within agricultural support and service use classification as specified under the UDO, Section 4.2.1. For, also in this accessory use standard, we're adding the language to number four, for outdoor display areas shall be limited to no more than one-half the length of the storefront or the building side, for all use classifications except agricultural support and services. Outdoor display areas associated with agricultural support services, support and services shall meet the criteria specified in the earlier section. And they can also, agricultural support services may include storage and sale of propane and welding gas. All storage and handling must meet the applicable North Carolina fire codes and appropriate state and federal regulations. So these are, this is the actual text that, like I said, Tractor Supply, they submitted an amendment, we had several conversations to get it to where it addressed any concerns that we had, and still met their needs, so that they can do their, let me get back, you get back for me? To all of their detached, because the picture can tell you much better than the site plan, this one, where you have the display along the sidewalk, you have storage area on the side, and you also have the detached display of things such as trailers and other items that they typically sell. Right here. So Planning Board and Staff, we do recommend approval of this text amendment, and we do find that it is consistent with the several policies of 2006 Land Use Plan, including ED 1, New and Expanding Business Industries and Businesses, should be especially encouraged that diversify the local economy, train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force, and are compatible with environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of Currituck County. CD 1, Neighborhood Serving Commercial Districts should be encouraged to locate for a collector or secondary street intersected with a street of equal or greater size. Appropriately designed small-scale businesses may also be near other neighborhood serving facilities such as schools and parks. CD 4, Highway-Oriented Commercial Uses should be clustered along segments of highway and contain land uses which are mutually compatible and reinforcing in use and design. They should be designed in such a way as to minimize signage access points and to prevent unsightly dysfunctional strip development. It's also consistent with Moyoc's small-area plan BI 3, promote economic growth proportionate to population growth in order to ensure growth of local tax base proportionate to increased demand for public services. And we do feel that this request is reasonable in the public interest because it will allow Tractor Supply to maintain their typical operations within Currituck County, where the business will provide citizens with much-needed retail services. And Planning Board and Staff both, once again, recommend approval of this text amendment.
Okay. Questions, comments for Mrs. Cicero?
I was going to just ask the county attorney, like I said, before we go to vote, I know this is just a text amendment, which is county-wide. My company actually bid on a part of the install for Tractor Supply, so I just, I don't know, I need to recuse myself for the text amendment part of it or the whole shebang.
Let me look at the statute real quick. While he's digging into that, so if, like Home Depot decided to come to Moyoc, obviously they're a different type of business than an ag supply facility, but does our UDO, would it afford them the same opportunities that we are doing, because they're going to have outdoor display areas for mowers, flower gardens, all that stuff? Is there provisions within our UDO to allow that type of a home goods store to function similar to what that, because they function very similarly, it seems to me, when you go to them, it's just a bigger scale, obviously, with Home Depot, but-
Right, and Home Depot would be, short answer would be no, they, we do have some flexibility, and they would be allowed some outdoor storage, but they would need to come back in and address it, just much like Tractor Supply is doing here, very specifically for their needs. Tractor Supply, we have classified them as the agricultural support service, so we view them more as a, as an agricultural, very similar, along those lines, an agricultural type of use. And not, and then Home Depot, Lowe's, Walmart even, they would have to, a little bit stricter standard, or they could come in and do the same thing that Tractor Supply is, and have something that would address, the change could address their needs specifically.
I'm wondering, is it, is it normal for a business of this scope to have to come in and do this kind of stuff, or are we, I'm just, like, it doesn't seem like we're as welcoming maybe for these types of establishments as maybe we could be in the way that the UDO is currently written.
Potentially.
I don't know if Home Depot is knocking on the door, I doubt it, since they have a store right down the road, but it just, it just begs the question, it's all, it's more of a-
Should we go ahead and be proactive and amend, or submit a text amendment that would address those?
That was kind of my thought process, is maybe, maybe we should have a further discussion down the road about whether or not we want to play with that kind of stuff.
Retreat question.
Yeah, it's a retreat.
I would like to add one thing to the last sentence where it says, "We'll provide citizens with, you know, services and promote job creation." I think that should be added for Currituck residents.
All right. Mr. McCree, did you figure out anything yet, or are we still on the number?
Is, is, you said you bid, did you actually, were you actually awarded?
No, I just bid on the job, this was months ago.
Oh, well, then I don't see there to be a conflict of interest such that you would need to recuse yourself.
I recused myself on one, where I had bid on one, where we, and then we ended up, we won, I mean, we won and ended up planting the plants and trees.
Let me understand, you bid, you bid on something with-
Bid on the, I installed Tractor Supply, some of the last stages.
And were you awarded the bid?
No, I don't know how many people bid on it, it was-
And are you going to have any further intent or have in the process now any business activity between your company and Tractor Supply?
I mean, I don't know if it mattered or not, I mean, like I said, I mean, I did bid on a job, I just wanted to, you know, if we, if my company was awarded the install part of the, of their thing, you know what I'm saying, I wanted to recuse myself.
That's what I'm trying to understand, have they already, have they already-
Penalty.
So you have not won any award yet, and you've been notified that you have been denied that, or that they've awarded that bid to anyone?
We were awarded a job-
So it's, so it's something by rights.
So you, you have a bid that you're waiting-
Pending bid.
Pending bid.
I, I, I-
I lost sleep over it, I don't have any questions.
Well, I think I would suggest that, that, because you may have some financial interest in the outcome of this text amendment, that you should recuse yourself. And you should, the board should excuse you from voting on this matter.
Okay.
Move Commissioner McCord be recused.
Thank you.
Second.
Who was first? Birthday girl.
Yes, birthday girl.
Birthday girl. All in favor of allowing Commissioner McCord to recuse himself?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Thank you, Kevin. Step on out, we'll call you back in a minute. All right, so anything else for Mrs. Cicero this evening? All right, I assume we have a representative here from Tractor Supply to come up and talk to us, invite them up at this time.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Saunders, and I'm with Quailwood Associates, and I'm here on behalf of Tractor Supply. I'm the civil engineer for the site, which you saw up there with all the color coding on where we would like to put our displays. I'd like to state that I feel that the Tractor Supply Company text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Land Use Plan and other applicable county adopted plans and the purpose of the UDO. Northern Mainland, Currituck County contains significant areas of agricultural zoning that could benefit from a rural retail supplier, and the Currituck County Northern Mainland Future Land Use Plan is consistent with this. In addition, the Moyoc Small Area Plan expresses a desire to protect the community's rural character and promote Moyoc as a prime location for small businesses and light industrial development. The proposed development is consistent with these goals and objectives. I would also state that the text amendment is not in conflict with any provision of the UDO or county code of ordinances. The site will be developed in accordance with the county TRC review process, including development and infrastructure standards. We are currently going through the major site plan process with the county, as well as all state permitting for the site plan and what they are proposing here. It is required based on changed conditions, since it offers, since Tractor Supply Company offers specialty products that are larger than those typically sold within retail stores, especially their outdoor display area, like you saw up on the text amendment, outdoor fences, large pins and things like that, that you'd want to place outside and can't really fit inside of a building. And we feel it is compatible with the purpose and the intent of the zoning district and the UDO, and it would improve the compatibility among uses to ensure efficient development within the county, because it is GB and it's retail, which is permitted within that zone, and outdoor sales and display areas are also permitted within the GB zoning. Other than that, I feel like this text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Currituck County, but I'm here for any technical questions you may have on the site layout or infrastructure as proposed.
Any questions from board? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming out this evening.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I will open the public comment, and I had that in front of me a second ago. I only have one person, and that was you. That was you, signed up. Would anyone else like to speak to us this evening that's here in the audience? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve PB 20-15 because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2006 Land Use Plan, including policy ED 1, CD 1, and CD 4, and the Moyoc Small Area Plan BI 3. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because Tractor Supply product line is in harmony with the rural lifestyle of Currituck County, will provide a needed retail service to the community, and create, promote job creation.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. I'll have to get Commissioner McCord back in here, if he didn't hear that we were done. Thank you, Kevin. All right. Next up this evening is new business, item A, sole source purchase resolution of Maritime Museum multimedia software. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is essentially just an approval for a sole source resolution. This is for some of the exhibits at the Maritime Museum, so we awarded the bid to construct the exhibits, and this is to allow the purchase of software that goes along with that, so that it all meshes together well. That's why it's a sole source recommendation.
Any questions for the manager on this? Well, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, recommendation of a bid award for raw water main upgrade of Southern Outer Banks Water System.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. This is a bid award for a deep-water main that is, is going to run a 16-inch, upgrading to 16-inch. What this will do is allow us to take water from the new cellfish well, add it to the plant, so that in the future, when we need to expand skids, we've got more raw water coming in, so we can grow as the Outer Banks sees that growth. This bid was a, this project was budgeted at $700,000. The bid came in at $919,500. The bulk of that cost increase was due to material increases, which you've heard discussed ad nauseam over the last two or three months here, specifically PVC. Also, there's some extra costs for the directional bore, there's a lot of utilities under that area, so the two options are to very tentatively try to dig around all of those utilities or to directional bore underneath of them. And so it's a little more expensive to go that route. We are recommending that we award the bid. The bid would be awarded to EnviroTech and Limited Construction Services LLC for the amount of $919,500. Be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
They, I assume that they have the reserves to handle this in their account.
They, they had to meet all of the bid requirements, which would be, you know, bond documents.
No, us, Southern Outer Banks Water.
Oh, yes, sir, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, yeah, this will be cashed from the retained earnings of the water fund.
Okay. I'll move for approval. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, next, C, board appointments, appointment of Commissioner McCord to Trillium Health Advisory. Who wants to, I think you could use some mental health. We definitely, we need to move for approval. I will move for approval to get you on the Trillium Mental Health.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr., all in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the consent agenda. Any comments or concerns this evening on the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll open the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. Budget amendments this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, you've got two budget amendments before you as the TDA. You've got a, one budget amendment that would move money in order to do an HVAC replacement at the Wellhead Club, and to paint and do window repairs at the historic Jarvisburg Colored School. The part that we're going to move to do the window repair and replacement and painting is just for the windows. We're currently doing some research to do some more major painting upgrades on the historic Jarvisburg Colored School, but this would basically increase the occupancy tax fund by $87,000, and more than comfortable that we'll have enough occupancy tax this year to cover that cost.
Okay, thank you. I'll move for approval then.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the TDA?
Oh, there's one other budget amendment.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
That's what I was going on that far.
So the, the second budget amendment is basically to increase the cost for lifeguard services. We agreed with the lifeguard, the company that provides those services to do roving patrols through Thanksgiving, the cost of that was $24,000. We're recommending moving an additional 50, just in case something happens and the season starts earlier next year. I don't foresee needing lifeguards after Thanksgiving, which is when the new addition would roll through, but happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I'm still scrolling, did I, I can't remember. Do we have anything else this evening? Okay, thank you. I'll move to approve the extra money for the lifeguards then.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now can we join the regular, the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.